Emery's team. We would play out there for a while and it was, it was really cool.
Ready rock and roll.
Yeah, I got that right.
What's that? Yeah. Alright guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council for the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas. Um, let's see, what's the date today? Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, we don't have a pastor available this evening, but if you guys will stand with me, I'll go ahead and do the invocation. Father God, thank you for bringing us here once again this evening. God, please give us wisdom and guidance as we try to make the best decisions for our citizens and for our entire community, God. Jesus's name, amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Thrawn. Mrs. Feeback.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a couple requested changes. Um, we're adding a few things. Uh, the first item that we're adding is a presentation honoring K nine Loki. Uh, the next item is a discussion item, uh, number twenty-two, which is one hundred and ninety-first Street sing- signalization project. And then the third addition is executive session number two. Um, other than that, are there any other requested changes or additions, or if not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll go ahead and move, move on with the presentation honoring K nine Loki and Chief Sutterby, you have the floor. I don't think your mic's on.
Alright, how about that?
There.
Alright, here we go. Alright. Thanks, Mayor, again. Thanks, Council, for allowing me to come up and, and say a few words about K nine Loki, who we did, uh, lose there, um, yesterday afternoon. So, I prepared some remarks to keep me on track. And then at the end, I'd like to play his last call for everybody to, to hear and really have a moment of silence to honor, uh, the canine and its handler. So it is great sorrow that I share with the council and our community. That K nine Loki was laid to rest yesterday afternoon, November twelfth, following medical complications due to kidney failure. Yesterday, we gathered at the Oval and Park Emergency Veterinary and Specialty Hospital to honor Officer Lance Whiff and K nine Loki. K nine partners from agencies throughout the metro area joined members of our department to pay tribute to Loki's service and dedication. They say a canine han- uh, canine often reflects the personality of its handler. And that could not be more true in this case. Loki was strong, tough, and deeply committed to serving the community of Spring Hill. He will be greatly missed, but he will never be forgotten. We want to extend our heartfelt thanks to the Oval and Park Emergency Veterinary and Specialty Hospital for their exceptional care and generosity. Because they donated their time and services, um, out of appreciation for Officer Whiff and Loki's dedication to public service. So all the costs associated with, um, his care and things were donated by the veterinary hospital, so it didn't cost the city any money. And then, uh, we are also profoundly grateful to our partner agencies, who came on such short notice to honor K nine Loki. You can see in the pictures, the officers standing outside of their vehicles with their canines. Uh, their presence meant a great deal to the members of the Spring Hill Police Department. So finally, thank you to our governing body and to the members of our community for your continued support. It is always deeply appreciated. And in closing, may K nine Loki rest peacefully, knowing his service and loyalty will forever remain a part of the Spring Hill Police Department's legacy. And then if you don't mind playing that last call for me.
They can cross the street to come up and honor one of our members of the department.
I don't think your mic's on.
Alright, how about that?
There.
Alright, here we go. Alright. Thanks, Mayor, again. Thanks, Council, for allowing me to come up and, and say a few words about K nine Loki, who we did, uh, lose there, um, yesterday afternoon. So, I prepared some remarks to keep me on track. And then at the end, I'd like to play his last call for everybody to, to hear and really have a moment of silence to honor, uh, the canine and its handler. So it is a great sorrow that I share with the council and our community. That K nine Loki was laid to rest yesterday afternoon, November twelfth, following medical complications due to kidney failure. Yesterday, we gathered at the Oval and Park Emergency Veterinary and Specialty Hospital to honor Officer Lance Whiff and K nine Loki. K nine partners from agencies throughout the metro area joined members of our department to pay tribute to Loki's service and dedication. They say a canine han- uh, canine often reflects the personality of its handler. And that could not be more true in this case. Loki was strong, tough, and deeply committed to serving the community of Spring Hill. He will be greatly missed, but he will never be forgotten. We want to extend our heartfelt thanks to the Oval and Park Emergency Veterinary and Specialty Hospital for their exceptional care and generosity. Because they donated their time and services, um, out of appreciation for Officer Whiff and Loki's dedication to public service. So all the costs associated with, um, his care and things were donated by the veterinary hospital, so it didn't cost the city any money. And then, uh, we are also profoundly grateful to our partner agencies, who came on such short notice to honor K nine Loki. You can see in the pictures, the officers standing outside of their vehicles with their canines. Uh, their presence meant a great deal to the members of the Spring Hill Police Department. So finally, thank you to our governing body and to the members of our community for your continued support. It is always deeply appreciated. And in closing, may K nine Loki rest peacefully, knowing his service and loyalty will forever remain a part of the Spring Hill Police Department's legacy. And then if you don't mind playing that last call for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's definitely a sad thing to follow. Um, I was blessed and brought my son with me to be a part of this yesterday, and it was definitely a sad occasion. I remember when we got Loki. Been a great dog for not only our department, but many, many departments around us have utilized his services and, uh, his very, very high reviews for the, the type of officer and police dog that he was. So he'll be greatly missed for sure and, uh, prayers and wishes to, uh, his, uh, his handler, um, Officer Whip. Um, it was, it was tough watching him. He, he carried him out, out of his vehicle inside and just bawling, tears running down his eyes. So it's, it's awesome, the bond that these guys have with their, with their canine. So, um, definitely a sad, a sad occasion and he'll be greatly missed. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. Um, we did not have anyone sign up on the list, but if there's anyone in, in the audience that would like to speak, if you would come up and state your name and address, now would be your time.
Thank you. My name is Paul Lewis and I'm a member of the Johnson County Commission on Aging. Board member and I'm also in the subcommittee for outreach. And our purpose is to make sure that Johnson County residents, regardless of what city they live in, but Johnson County in general, are aware of the opportunity for helping those who are aging. Cause aging affects everybody, regardless of what you think, aging affects everybody. You may know somebody who's aging or have a family member, but a lot of people are not aware of the services that are out there by simply calling. And as part of the Commission on Aging, we are also in contact with the legislature from the Topeka to make sure that the needs of Johnson County are also felt by everybody. Cause Johnson County is pretty much the premier for what happens to the rest of the county for as far as aging goes. We have the, uh, area agency on aging. There's a lot of acronyms that are like, okay, but that's beside the point. And, uh, our sole purpose is to reach out to organizations such as city councils, rotary clubs, VFWs and the like, to make sure that maybe even some PTAs, to make sure that they are aware of people who have needs, that they know who to call and what they can help with. And I have some information that anybody's able to have. And I was here a couple weeks ago and there was something put on the mayor's desk by one of your clerks that would show you that what the Commission on Aging is about. I also am able to kind, get contact information and just if anybody has any questions. And Spring Hill has a unique circumstances that do straddle Johnson County and Miami County. And I'm sure that the needs of Johnson County, you don't want to make the people in Spring Hill and Miami County feel like they're left out. So I'm sure that's something that the city council, along with the, uh, author, you know, the, uh, designated people in Miami County can work together so that everybody is benefiting because when you say you live in Spring Hill, they don't say, well, which side of the county line you live on? No. It's like when people say, well, you're from Kansas City? Yeah. Well, Kansas City where? The KCK or KC Mo. But Spring Hill, and since I live in Spring Hill, I thought it'd be important for me to reach out to the city council and with the new administration, after the elections are over with, to provide information to any members of the city council and the public in general that the food pantry, drive-in to, uh, different doctor's appointments, things that I need are out there, but nobody knows. So it's my purpose and our job as Commission on Aging to reach out to all organizations who may know somebody, but just people come in and ask the mayor or the city council, why need this? Okay, well, let me think about, well, we're sort of to fill in that need, to provide information that anybody can use. Anybody can use and it's open to the public. There's no, well, I don't think this, it's available for everybody. So I'll leave this information at, so the, uh, city council can look at it and determine what they want to do. And then contact information is there if they have any further questions. They can call the phone numbers, email me, things of that nature. And I'll provide whatever services I can help out to get the information. If you need more things, uh, pamphlets, let me know and I'll get those for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's definitely a much-needed service. So I appreciate that and we'll try to do what we can to get, get that information out. Thank you. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close this participation at this time and move on to consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if anyone has any questions or comments, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
PJ's still on there. I just miss him. Still there, PJ? Alright, motion carries five zero zero. Alright, next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash, what's the number? Sorry, it's not listed in here. Find it. Uh, twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Uh, Spring Hill Municipal Code, uh, let's see. Fifteen. Amendments to the unlawful operations of golf carts, unlawful operations of worksite vehicle or UTV and changes to maximum speed limits. And Chief Sutterby, you have the floor again.
Okay, mic's working. We're good. Um, I know this has been a long time coming. Uh, I was here before you about a month ago, talking about this as a discussion item. And so now we have the ordinance here before you. So the, the things that I think you need to be aware of um, really are that there's a few major changes to the, um, ordinance uh, regarding the speed of vehicles that you'll see in this proposal. And that's really changing the speed limit on Victory between two hundred and twenty-sixth Street going north to Webster. And that will be thirty-five, it was thirty-five, it will be thirty if you approve it tonight. Um, and also Webster Street between Victory and North Street. That will change from thirty-five to thirty also. In addition to, uh, the changes here on the golf carts, the, uh, ordinance will be amended to read that the speed limit, uh, the golf carts can be allowed to you, be used on, on streets that have a speed limit of thirty miles per hour or less. And that they require golf carts to operate as close to the right side of the road as possible. Other than that, the cha- there's no other changes really to the golf cart ordinance because all the other things that are important are in there regarding having a driver's license, having insurance, um, having a, uh, a sign that's a slow-moving vehicle sign. Um, all those things are already included in the current ordinance, so there's no need to do any more amendments to that particular ordinance. And then finally, um, on the UTV, that's a, that is a new ordinance that's added because we don't have one currently uh, other than one that prohibits the use of them. And so, uh, I'll spend a little bit more time on this one just because it does have a little bit of, of newness to it. Uh, the, of course, if you're gonna operate a worksite vehicle in the city limits, you're gonna have to meet the definition of a worksite vehicle. That's gonna be in the ordinance. Uh, you may operate on streets with speed limits of forty-five miles an hour or less. Uh, you may cross roads with limits over forty-five miles an hour, but not interstates, federal or state highways. On these vehicles, you must have lights, turn signals, reflectors, rearview and side mirrors and meet noise and muffler, uh, requirements as, uh, per the, uh, Kansas statutes. Again, operators must have a valid driver's license that's unrestricted, um, to operate this and have motor vehicle insurance. And then seat belts are required, um, and passengers are limited to the number of seats that are installed. Now, there are a couple of exemptions that are in the state statute that we carried over to our municipal ordinance, and that is really for agro- agricultural use on interstate, federal and state highways. This is permitted in state statute. And then, um, and then as an additional, um, just information for you, Johnson and Miami Counties both in the county jurisdictions already allow UTV use under the state statute. So, I did provide a couple of maps with your packet to kind of show you where these vehicles can be used um, in the cities, both UTVs and golf carts. And so, um, let's, uh, I think that's all the, really the information I have for you tonight that's, I think, uh, important to the ordinances. So if you have any questions, I'll entertain those now.
I don't really have any questions. I just think this is something that'll, I mean, we, we tried a few years ago with the golf cart, cause I remember when we didn't have golf carts and so we passed that, and I think it's been a big success overall. And so this was kind of the next step to, that was kind of almost like a pilot testing that out to see how that would go, and that was pretty successful. So this is kind of the next step to trying to make it available to a few more people that might not have a golf cart and might have UTVs. So, and then also, you know, maintain more access to people from the south through the north to try to get, get around in towns. Yeah, I like it.
I don't have any questions, just, um, other than just, uh, like messaging the speed limit changes. Like, do you put, like, I noticed, cause there's been some streets where they've lowered speed limits and
Sure.
they do the flags on the, just to like, hey, changed.
So, um, on the speed limits, obviously we'll do some social media
Good.
releases to show, hey, this is gonna be coming. And, uh, I'll work with our PIO to make sure that, you know, we get that information out. One of the things that I talked to, uh, Jacob, the Public Works Director about is we're gonna put a warning sign, um, on Webster going south, uh, because that speed limit is forty-five. And so we're gonna put a warning sign there to to inform drivers, hey, the speed limit's gonna drop to thirty. So be aware of this as you're approaching. So we'll add that. There's not one there now. So that's kind of an additional step we're gonna take to ensure that drivers get plenty of a warning that the speed limit's gonna drop when they hit, uh, south of North Street. That's kind of confusing, isn't it?
Well, I think that's good anyways because, you know, when you're kind of coming in, hitting Sonic, I mean, you're going, like you say, you're going, even now, you're dropping down pretty rapidly.
Right. So we'll put that warning sign in there. And then we'll, we'll offer up, um, uh, an opportunity for people to, um, um, kind of like a town hall setting where if people want to come, uh, maybe we'll host it down at the community center where if they want to learn more about these vehicles and the use of them, then we'll have people down there that can explain the ordinance and answer any questions. Look at golf carts or UTVs if we need to, to make sure that they're in compliance with the city ordinances. So that we get, uh, plenty of information out to our public and that they're able to operate them, you know, legally. So.
I had two county residents on the west side of one hundred and ninety-ninth or of, of one sixty-nine on one hundred and ninety-ninth that asked if the, uh, like the farm use would give them access to go across, cause right now they go across to go to QuickTrip. Is that, I know we didn't want to have highway access crossing, but would that be considered part of the
I don't think so.
The highway work type thing?
They'd have to be showing that they're doing
Actual work.
actual agricultural use, uh, getting from one basically piece of property to another to do
Okay.
agricultural use and getting back to it, I think is the intention.
A golf cart? Are you talking about like an U-
Uh, well, no, with the UTV.
Okay, I was gonna say.
No, not the golf cart.
Yeah. No, unfortunately, I think they'd have to show that they were moving from one piece of property to another piece of farmland or, uh,
They can cross at two hundred and twenty-third. Yeah, I think both of them lived off one hundred and ninety-ninth or two hundred and seventh.
It'd be a long way around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be a long way to go.
That is the only bad thing about it is that if you're using a UTV and you're on the west side of one sixty-nine, the only really route to get to is you're gonna have to, to go down to two twenty-third and that is quite a route. I drove it myself. It's, you know, it's, it's about a twenty-mile round, you know, roundabout to get there, cause there's just right now
There's no direct route.
There's no direct route down there. You have to kind of cut yourself back and over to two twenty-thirds. So, that's the way bad thing about this. But it'll change as the city grows and, uh, and we get more streets that go through, so.
Well, I'd probably have a different outlook if that intersection was different. Going east to west is tough already because of the no-turn signal and stuff, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I mean, I think this is a step in the right direction. I know
Yeah.
it's something I hear a lot.
And, and if we, you know, let's say five years down the road, we get another bridge, you know, over one hundred and seventy-fifth street or somewhere else, we can always go back and amend it to, to allow there other, other areas as well.
Sure.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I got a couple comments. Um, no questions. I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, approving this tonight. I'm, I'm curious, kind of, if you can give us a little bit of what your thoughts are on enforcement with, and how we're gonna manage this. Um, I'm still really concerned about the safety issue with cars and golf carts on Webster. Uh, I'm willing to give it a try and see how it goes, but, you know, the school day morning drop-off pickups, I know is gonna be a big thing. There's lots of congestion, lots of different vehicles, sometimes people in too much of a hurry. Um, you know, I think our philosophy on road or I guess traffic stops has always been lots of warnings, not necessarily lots of tickets. And I just feel like we should be pretty strict on if we're seeing issues with golf carts because of the safety concern that, you know, if they do have an accident with a car or a vehicle, the, the golf cart is gonna lose. So, um, you got any kind of thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I think we have to be a little bit more strict on unlicensed drivers.
That was, that was my number two.
On drivers that are under the age to be operating.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there is room for some education in there for, um, adult operators who are trying to intentionally do things the right way.
Mm-hmm.
And they break the law i- initially, um, because we're trying, it is new. Um, we do already sit predominantly in those school zones, um, over there by Spring Hill Elementary, um, already, and we do, um, you know, monitor that pretty closely right now. So I feel like we're doing a good job already in that area of monitoring speed and, and trying to slow people down, especially because, you know, during the school time, it goes all the way down to twenty miles an hour in that area. So, um, I agree with you. I think there are certain things that we'll have to be strict, um, on because of the danger, um, of violation. I hope that answers, uh, your questions.
The, the only issue I've seen since we approved golf carts with my own eyes has been the underage driver issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've, I don't know that I've ever seen anybody driving recklessly or, you know, nefariously or anything like that. Um, and I'm sure, you know, and then the underage leads inexperience, easy mistakes, things like that. So.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there, in your guys' system, I assume there's a way to show if you've already given a warning for something specific?
Yes, yeah, we, we, we can track those and we can see
Okay.
you know, who's been cited before.
Yeah. So if somebody's like, oh, I didn't know.
Right. Well, sometimes it doesn't work good. Uh, we can track that, yeah.
Uh, the only, only thing I had is this, the map. This will be an excellent tool for you. And the more we can put this out in the public's hands, the better. Um, makes it very easy to understand where you can and can't go and in what, where you can go. So.
Yeah, I agree. If we can blast it on social media, on our stories, every, I mean, everywhere you can get it out, put it in the newsletter, everything.
Well, that, yeah, I was, I was thinking some sort of pamphlet and newsletter or some sort of dedicated page that shows all the rules and
Mm-hmm.
cause there's still things that I'm like, oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah, like, like the slow-moving vehicle
Yeah.
triangle. I would say there's a lot, including my own. I don't have one of mine yet, so I, I've ordered them on Amazon, but, you know, you gotta, gotta have that on there. So it's just something as simple as that.
Yeah, so we'll make sure, uh, we use all these avenues to get the information out to people. Cause we do want, we want people to enjoy golf carts and UTVs within the city. We just want them to be careful, drive safely, make sure that they're following the rules and anything that we can do on the front side of that to inform people and keep them, uh, within the boundaries. That'll make it a lot smoother for everybody involved. So that's the goal here. And uh, obviously enforcement sometimes is, is the last straw we want to use. You know, we really, I'd rather be preventative on the front end than have to do it that way. But there are some violations, as we've spoken about tonight, that will have to be enforced just to make sure that we're sending a clear message that we can't tolerate people who are under the age to operate a vehicle, driving these, um, on the city streets. So.
Well, we don't want to ruin it for everyone else when you have, you know, a few people ruin it for the whole, whole town.
Yeah.
Well, we've seen the last, what, month or so, there's been a couple kids that have gotten killed on like the scooters and stuff and I think those are probably even worse, but, um.
Which we may have to address that at some point.
Working on that right now.
As far as the UTVs go, they still have, need the slow-moving vehicle sign also, right?
I believe they do.
I think so.
I couldn't tell by the wording if it
Unless I missed it.
To me, it looked like it covered everything, but.
I, I'm not sure that they do because they're not
Cause they're not technically
Cause they're driving, yeah, they're not as, I, I, I don't believe, now that I, now that I've re-
Yeah.
clicked on my notes, I don't believe that's a requirement of the UTVs because of their speed that they
Okay.
travel. So.
Alright.
They do still have to have the reflectors. So that's what kind of, instead of the, instead of the slow-moving vehicle, you gotta make sure.
And as far as lights go for the golf cart portion, I guess for UTVs too, but I think they come with more traditional vehicle lights. You s- it says on their motorcycle lights, does that mean just like headlights and
Yeah.
some sort of brake light or a taillight or what's the?
Taillights mainly.
Okay.
Yeah, so a head, a light out in front that'll, um, light up the roadway and, and then of course taillights so you can see them from behind. So.
But no actual brake lights? They can just be taillights?
I don't think there's brake lights required. I would have to
Yeah, when I saw the motorcycle, I wasn't sure if that meant
Let me ask. Adam, do you know the answer to that question? Brake lights on golf carts?
Uh, I would say it probably means
Come on up here, sorry.
Yeah, cause I, I think all it said was motorcycle-style lights, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it says turn signals and multi-beam headlights are not required. What's the stat?
Uh, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably meaning more along the lines of the light requirements that, uh, the statute puts out for motorcycles.
Okay.
Which is slightly different than the one for vehicles because they said Slightly different than the one for vehicles, because they sit differently. You know, for vehicles, it has to be a certain amount of inches off, off of the road. Um, and you need to have two, whereas a motorcycle, it's one and one. I would assume that it's probably trying to keep it in line with that portion of the statute.
Okay.
There are golf carts that have a single front headlight.
Yeah.
Uh, may have two brake lights, but, um, I'm, I'm guessing it's to keep those golf carts in line with the statute.
Okay. I was more, what about the brake light? Do they have to be brake lights or can they just be on the back?
Yeah, it has to be brake light.
Brake light, okay. I would think so, but I just wanted to make sure. Alright, cool. Alright.
Well, it also says, if I read right, it says sunrise to sunset, so.
Without the lights, yeah.
Yeah, without the lights.
Yeah.
So that's where, if you wanna be out after dark, then. I just wanna make sure, yeah, we get that, cause the way I read it, I was like, oh, you just have to have some sort of lights, which, like my kids' bikes have that, it's just a light in the front.
Include that in a pamphlet.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, break that down a little bit more.
Cool. Other than that, I think, I mean, I'm happy to change, I think the speed limit change. I don't think it's necessarily just for this. I, I, on those roads, I'm okay with it going lower, cause right now I think thirty-five may be too fast on some of those roads anyway, so.
Well, that's kinda what, what I thought initially with the school, with the.
You got kids, people walk on Victory, and if you're going thirty-five, that's pretty damn.
And there's so many blocks in between there with people slowing down, so half the time you gotta slow down and go about that speed anyway, so, yeah.
Alright.
Tell my sixteen-year-old daughter she's gonna have to slow down. Alright, any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty, Spring Hill Municipal Code XV, and amendments to unlawful operation of golf cart, unlawful operation of worksite vehicle or UTV, and changes to maximum speed limits.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mister Thrawn? Mrs. Feback?
Yes.
Mister Peel?
Yes.
Mister Young?
Yes.
Mister Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Mayor, ordinance twenty-two-five dash twenty passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of amendment number one to the task order with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc., to extend the sewer evaluation and engineering design associated with the Northwest Sewer Expansion Project, and Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Okay, the item before you is a request to extend Burns McDonald's, um, contract with us. Uh, we had originally contracted with them for the Northwest Sewer. We've got some development projects that are, um, in that area, and we wanted to make sure that they had, uh, the availability to have sewer. So, we're currently working on that design with Burns McDonald. Uh, there is a need for some additional work in other areas that are related to that Northwest Sewer. Um, there's, uh, a few that branch off into, um, uh, the Webster Street, and some other areas off of one sixty-nine. So, um, in order to be consistent with that design, and to, um, kind of extend that sewer shed, uh, it made sense for us to just go ahead and add that to what Burns and McDonald is already doing. So it fits perfectly with their contract, cause they're right in the, uh, conceptual design stage where they're looking at sizing, and, uh, that overall sewer, sewer shed to make sure that, um, everything, um, is sized properly, before we get to the final plan stage. Uh, so again, this is the perfect timing. We did take that out to bid, uh, several months ago, whenever we engaged Burns McDonald, we, um, solicited five engineering firms from our on-call list. Um, three of them provided proposals to us, and Burns McDonald was lowest. Uh, so based on some of the, um, hourly rates and, um, assumptions that they had in their original task order, uh, they continued that, uh, with this, uh, amendment. So everything is in line with that. The additional work for the two primary project areas that we're looking at, uh, is an additional sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So that's gonna be added to their, um, previous task order for that Northwest Sewer. Uh, with that, staff recommends the approval of the amendment to the task order with Burns McDonald to extend that Northwest Sewer, project. I am available if you have any questions.
Where's the funding gonna come from?
The funding, the funding is going to come from, um, the bond proceeds that we already have for the Northwest Sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think, are we taking it from the sewer fund and then we could reimburse it from the bond if we need to?
That's correct.
I, I just have a comment on a question. I'm okay with this just cause the cost of it relative, if we went and redid it later, is gonna be way higher, so for sixty-six thousand dollars, the additional work we're gonna get is well worth it, I think. Um, so, I'm good with this.
And for the most part, it's an extension of the.
Yeah, what's already.
They're already.
Start back over, it'd be.
They're, they're way.
Be paying for a whole nother thing for no reason.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
So we might as well design it now.
Well, there are some efficiencies too, with having the same firm do that work.
Exactly.
Well, and they just happen to be the cheapest, so that's good. And they're obviously a well-known firm, so I have no issues with it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to accept a bid and approval of a task order with Burns McDonald Engineering Company, Inc., for designing the Northwest Sewer Expansion Project and authorize the mayor and city staff to execute.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the purchase of a sewer jetting slash vacuum combination truck for, uh, from VacCon, Inc., and Mister Spear, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So this item is, uh, if you may recall, back earlier in the year when we talked about capital projects, uh, this was an, uh, equipment purchase that was added to, uh, the capital, improvements list. And, uh, and just as a little bit of, you know, a little background, the sewer combo truck is, we use it for a lot of different things. Um, so the combination is it uses water to, to jet or clean, uh, the inside of, of pipes predominantly, or sanitary sewer and, uh, storm sewer. And then it also has the ability to vacuum, um, debris and material out of manholes, inlets, catch basins. Um, and kind of a third added benefit, it can also be used, uh, use both the water and the vacuum together, as, uh, what is known as a hydraulic excavator. So it lets us, you know, dig a hole, uh, without, a- and you can go around existing, uh, infrastructure pipe cables, uh, and not damage those. So it's got a number of, of uses. But primarily from a sewer maintenance perspective, th- this is probably the single most important piece of equipment for effectively maintaining a sanitary sewer collection system. You know, it, it allows you to regularly clean, um, eh, flush and clean all of those mains proactively. Um, eh, ideally, and then also, if there's a backup or a problem, having that equipment that we own and operate lets us respond faster and, and, uh, much more affordably than calling a contractor on, on an emergency basis as well. Um, if you'll recall, the real reason for the timing is with the, uh, upcoming shift of the water system over to Water One. We have a couple of employees that are currently working on the water side of the house. Um, we will have them freed up. And until then, until now, we really haven't had the personnel to, to man a vehicle like this. And, and given the capital cost, w- we don't want it to sit. We need to be out, uh, using it regularly. Yeah, with these two employees coming from, uh, the water, uh, side, um, then we can utilize them on the sewer side and, and make full use of, of this piece of equipment. We have over seventy-seven miles of sewer main and, and we're over forty-two miles of, uh, stormwater mains, so, uh, the need is, is there, and I think now is the time. The, uh, I mentioned the proactive nature, so I've looked at the maps and, and, and kind of, planning for some conservative production rates. I think, um, with this truck, we could do a, a five-year cycle. So we could, could get touch every line in the city, um, every five years. At the end of five years, start back, you know, at, at line number one and start over again. Uh, so, um, that in addition to, to any problem spots. So the process that we went through, uh, for this is, can you advance that, Amy, cause? So we, we looked at, uh, first at four different firms that, uh, that provide these trucks. Um, one of them did not have a local distributor. Um, their nearest distributor was in St. Louis and for, in terms of service and, and maintenance, that was a little further away than we were comfortable with. Um, the remaining three, we had each of them come out individually, do onsite demonstrations. So they, uh, came here and first, we just kinda did a once-over. They showed our staff the truck, features, capability, you know, operation, maintenance, all of those things. Then we went out to the field and we kinda hand pu- hand-selected some of our most challenging mains, um, and to, to really put them to the test and, uh, and, and cleaned and flushed, uh, those lines at, at, two or three different lines, uh, for each truck. And, uh, our, our staff, you know, got to, to help operate the truck and really see how it operates, you know, the ins and outs of using it, what, what they liked, what they didn't like. All three of, of those that we demonstrated, um, were members of a cooperative purchasing, um, group called Sourcewell. The city is also a member of Sourcewell. Uh, Sourcewell bids out any number of, of, you know, products and, and services and, and, you know, on a large nationwide level. Um, so they've, it, it's gone through that, competitive bidding, um, process, so it, you can take a product and, and as a Sourcewell member, purchase a product through that Sourcewell, uh, cooperative, and it satisfies all of the competitive bidding requirements. But rather than just picking one, getting that price and moving on, we went ahead and looked at the Sourcewell pricing, uh, for each one. We asked each of those companies, we said, that, we're looking for a truck to do X, Y, and Z. Gave them some, some pretty general parameters, and then asked them to propose their product that they thought would, would best, um, best suit our needs. That's what they demonstrated, that's what they priced. The prices were all pretty close together. Um, and luckily, pretty close to our capital budget as well, uh, which is always nice when it works out that way. Um, we narrowed it down to, there were two, um, that staff really felt would, would work very well and, and fit our needs. Um, that was the VacCon and the Vector, uh, brands. The, the final selection or kinda top choice was the VacCon, uh, unit. A- and really, we're, we're splitting hairs there, but, uh, it's got a, a unique hose reel, that's the large piece you can see on the front in that picture. Um, that's a, you know, specialized design, um, that is offered by VacCon. And then also just the, um, service and maintenance reputation of the local dealer distributor for the VacCon. Um, you know, that, those were, those were some of those items that, that helped tip the scale. Once we had selected and kind of narrowed in on that one, then we met again, uh, with that vendor and walked through, with, you know, kinda went through with a fine-tooth comb that proposal and, and we got into specific options and features, um, toolboxes and lights and placement of, of things and, you know, really getting into, uh, to the finer details. And then with that, um, VacCon gave us a, a final price. So that final price was seven thousand dollars higher, um, based on the additional options that, uh, that were selected. Um, so that's, that's the process that we went through. Um, a- and that recommendation, um, so like I said, we, we only went through that detailed option pricing, um, with, uh, VacCon. The other three, uh, we, we just had the initial proposal and sourceable pricing. Happy to answer any questions.
I have some questions. It was, uh, not to exceed five hundred and sixty-five thousand, so you stayed with, you stayed under.
Yeah, so the. So their, um, their proposal, you know, it was five sixty-two. I, I always at, at the suggestion of, uh, of Miss Dunn, I, I try to round up, um, to just to say, w- we have the authority to go up to five sixty-five. I fully expect the five sixty-two nine ninety to be the price. If there was some rounding error, I would hate to have to stop and wait for the next council meeting and come back because we were, you know, a hundred dollars off or something. So the, the capital budget was five hundred fifty thousand is what we had included in the capital budget. So this, we, we exceeded that, but we were in that ballpark, um.
Okay, and then two things, uh, warranty, I'd like you to talk about that. And then second of all, the company that you're buying it for, what kinda trainer are they gonna be doing with the staff and how available are they in case there's issues with this?
Great. So the, um, warranty, it, it comes with the, the, you know, standard manufacturer warranty and, and we're, there are two different warranties at play here. So there is the truck, uh, which is manufactured by Freightliner. So that main truck chassis, um, that engine would all be covered by Freightliner and the Freightliner warranty. Then there is a separate, um, motor and the vacuum and the water pumps for the, the sewer combination truck that is, that is VacCon. Um, and, and that is a, uh, is a two-year warranty, um, kind of across the board on, on everything. They offered some various, um, ex- kind of extended warranty and maintenance options. We looked at those, we looked at the price of those, uh, extended warranty packages, comparing it, and, and really just didn't feel like the value was there. Um, from, uh, a- again, that was when we got into options and details. We talked with VacCon, looked at that, um, they provided pricing, and, uh, and it just didn't feel like it was a, a good value. Um, I said, we did not get into the warranty, extended warranty, uh, conversation with, with any of the other vendors. Um, I'm sorry, what was the last part of that question?
Just on training, like how they're gonna train your staff on all the different features and functions and all that.
Yeah, are there any certifications required?
There, there aren't, there are not, um, specific certifications, but they do offer unlimited training, uh, which, uh, and, and actually all three manufacturers offer this, so they will come out onsite, um, o- honestly for as, as long or as, as many times as we would like, um, and, and provide training to our staff on, on how to operate, how to maintain it, you know, that, that regular daily, weekly, monthly, uh, maintenance that, that is critical for, you know, maintaining the, the well-being, health of the vehicle, if you will. Um, but also, let's say, three years down the road, we bring on, you know, new staff, rather than a train the trainer. We can contact them, they will, they will come back out, um, you know, give the existing staff a refresher, the new staff, um, that, that first-time training. So, um, there is unlimited training, uh, from them and, a- and they've got local, uh, you know, local folks here. Also on the maintenance side, um, they offer, uh, bo- both Vector and VacCon offer, um, mobile, uh, mobile repair and service. So, like, take the truck to them, or they will send a technician out onsite, uh, to, uh, to perform that work, which for a, a department as small as ours can be really valuable.
That would be nice.
You know, whether, as opposed to us taking, you know, a staff person, you know, out of the rotation, if you will, for, for at least most of a day, to get it up there, let them look at it, go through it, you know, drive it back. Um, or, or even two folks, if we're, if we have to go up and leave it, then that is a second employee and a second vehicle to, to go up and, and bring the first driver back. So, um, that onsite service is, is valuable.
What is the life expectancy for the VacCon system?
Um, I expect us to keep this unit in service for ten to twelve years. Um, there, there are plenty of them out there, you know, at, um, at, at fifteen years. In that, in that ten to fifteen-year range is when you, you know, start to see, you know. Maintenance, you know, it costs creep up and, but, uh, but ten to twelve years is, is what I would expect, to expect us to get out of this.
Is there annual, like, maintenance that's required that is above and beyond this five sixty? Like, you have to replace the hose reel every year? And things like that?
There's, so there is some, some annual maintenance. Um, the, the hose reel is, has a, uh, we may not get ten to twelve years out of it, but, um, it's a, it's a long-term item, but just the regular, you know, in addition to oil changes and, and hydraulic fluid, there's just, like any vehicle with recommended service intervals, there's that recommended service, uh, every year. Again, um, VacCon. Again, Vaccon offered a an option to purchase a a maintenance program. Again, I just didn't see the, you know, the the services were good, but the the cost compared to their hourly rates. It just seems like we're better off to to pay the hourly rate. Like I said, we we did not get in, I my understanding, yeah, I don't know what the all the ins and outs of the service package and offerings of of the other vendors are, but but we did get, go through that with Vaccon.
Michael and Chris installed most of my questions. But right now, what are we kind of spending annually for these services? Cause I know it's quite a bit more and we have to send a whole crew out and.
Yeah, so so it's hard to do a direct.
Are we just not really doing much maintenance?
Exactly. It it, so it costs for a single, right now, we're we're just reactive. When we have a a problem, we'll contact a a vendor. They come out, they'll, you know, clean, clear a blockage, you know, check a line that that may be problematic and and run and flush that line. Just paying, you know, there's a, there's a minimum trip charge and a, you know, a minimum hourly rate and so on. It's about two thousand dollars every time they flush a line. So because of that, like I said, we really only do it reactively.
I'd say if we want to be proactive, it'd be much more expensive.
But you you know, even just, you know, simple math, if 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 we, if we were to pay someone to flush one main a week, uh, which which is not a lot of productivity, yeah, that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. So it, I I have no, you know, doubts or concerns that that this will absolutely, you know, pay for itself. And and while it's a, it's a big expenditure, it will save us money in the long run. We'll we'll get that service at a much cheaper rate than if we were to pay for it.
Yeah, and I've never financed one of these in particular, but I have done a lot of the the water version of the excavators and those are I thought five fifty was pretty ambitious when you brought that up, because everything I've seen is in the quarter, three-quarter million, you know, range. So five sixty-five, I feel like is a pretty good deal, especially if it has that excavating feature, which is really nice. It's so much better than using, you know, the the big trunk that can just take everything out. So there's a lot of good things that you can do with it. I'm I'm okay with it. I think at the end of the day, we're having to start look more about proactiveness than just being reactive to everything, especially we've had complaints with smell and things like that. I think this will make a huge difference when it comes to our sewer system and all that, especially with our expansion. It's going to be. We're going to need to be able to take care of stuff ourselves.
Yeah, with as many new sewer lines as we're putting in, we need to be, it'll be utilized for sure.
If we have it for twelve years, like you're talking about, it's about forty-seven thousand.
I was gonna say, it's fifty.
So I mean, what is that, twenty-four jets at two thousand bucks a pop, something like that? So if we're using it more than twenty-five times, twenty-four times a year.
Well, I I did it at twenty-four and it was about the break even.
Yeah, we we would, I would expect us to, you know, to be able to do somewhere around. It's going to vary where and the length of the line and so on, but six to ten lines per day. Get in and 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 doing that. So.
Is it a two-person operation or a single person?
It's it's a two-person operation. Largely largely for for safety. Having, watching both traffic, but watching the unit as it goes into the manhole as well as kind of manning the truck side of things. In an emergency, you could flush a line with with one person, but from a day-to-day operational perspective, two two is best way to go.
And do you need a special license to drive this?
It it is just big enough, you need a CDL, but we require all of our.
I wasn't sure if we got everybody over to C D O or not.
So so all of our folks are.
Stack and see for that, but yeah, it sounds like we're good there. Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I think this is a good thing. I've heard more issues as of late. We kind of went through this a couple of years ago. We had, you know, smell issues. So if we say, hey, we're trying to get in front of it, because I think just cleaning on a regular basis is going to make a huge difference.
And I've noticed, personally noticed some smell issues over the last few months, especially walking down Webster in different areas and stuff.
We see that from time to time. I'm, one of the things that we really haven't haven't dealt with, you know, gotten into this before. I think, I think in many cases, a lot of the smell issues that we that we hear about are from our storm sewer system. Where that water is just sitting and and getting stagnant and and those aren't aren't designed to keep those odors in at all. The sanitary sewer with solid manhole lids and those are, they're not airtight, but but they are sealed up much better. But our storm sewer system is is wide open. And because we aren't able to do, or haven't historically done that routine maintenance, I think a lot of those odor problems are just things sitting in that storm sewer system. This will have the ability to to catch those as well.
Especially drier times of the year when you're not getting as much rain, you're not getting that water moving through there and flushing out the old stagnant water.
No, that's good.
I like this. I mean, we've talked about it for a couple of years, so it's something we've kind of wanted for a while. Really not even just wanted, something we've needed for a while, so.
Well, I think we had, I think we had three or four options on there and I think we all said this was the one we thought was the best priority, so.
I know there's, yeah, I know there's a, the price difference is not insignificant. But between the those those two trucks were kind of the the top two choices. You know, we didn't go back and really look at and and negotiate any final pricing with that Vector unit if i- if that cost is a concern and you and you would like us to go back and, you know, take a, do the same in-depth cost look for the Vector unit as a Vaccon. We can absolutely do that.
It sounds like there was unanimous on this particular truck, that they liked the features and usability of it. So I don't have a problem with the, you know, extra, what, twenty thousand dollars?
Well, and I've heard of Vaccon, so I mean, they're pretty reputable, but.
Yeah, they're they're, they are.
And with the service being readily available, I just, I just think it's a better, better option.
I hadn't asked my question yet, but I was going to ask about the price difference and, you know, is it, it's not insignificant. Like you said, it's twenty thousand dollars, maybe plus or minus a little bit.
Well, yeah, before their add-ons, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would, I would be open to, if there's a cost savings there, I think we should probably go take a look at it and and see if there's a little more due diligence we can do with that. I think that would certainly be worthwhile. You know, we're always up here looking for efficiencies, so.
Did you get any information as far as their, do they have the mobile or do you not get, do you get into that with them?
So I had, actually, just earlier this week, I I talked with the the Vector representative. And, you know, and and they have a mobile, it it's fairly new service, in fact. So we had some older equipment that we purchased from the same same dealer that that sells the Vector equipment. And and at that time, they they did not have the mobile service and 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 we had some problems with some slow service, taking a long time to get things done. They have since kind of changed and overhauled their their service methodology and and kind of whole business model on on that side of the house. So my, haven't used them yet, but my understanding is they also have the mobile service and and yeah, some of the same same capabilities, also the same training offerings as Vaccon. So they're, they're they're both good products with seemingly comparable service offerings as well.
What made the difference of picking the the Vaccon over the Backtour as far as?
The, a- again, it was, we we were splitting hairs. There were, there were little things about the features. Operation of the truck, there was, there was nothing negative that our folks found with the Vector. It was just a matter that the Vaccon had a had a couple of extra bells and whistles that they that they liked a little bit more. And those, honestly, the the bigger issue was the concerns of some of the the historical service concerns with the Vector representative. They they may have corrected that now.
Um, I have a suggestion. Unless every, the majority agrees to approve this, anytime like I'm making a big decision such as this with the amount of money, sometimes I'll call other mental health centers, I'll call other facilities and I'll be like, okay, which one do you use? And what do you like about it? What do you not? So I don't know if if there's other cities that have an equipment like this where they can say, yeah, we had a a Vector before and I'm telling you, we just got a Vaccon and that's the answer. So however it goes up here, I mean, I just would suggest that and offer that to you, because we learned so much when we were making a massive change within our organization from hearing what other organization that has actually utilized the the product or whatever it was.
And and there are organizations in the area that use, that that have both or.
Oh, do they? Okay.
Organizations have one, organizations that have the other. So it, there are several in the area.
It's just a preference or whatever, I guess. Okay, because I mean, a salesperson is going to tell you what you want to hear. So I always like to know the people that are using it, like, what do you think of this? You know?
Are these specific to order, like they take six to twelve months or what's the?
They they are, I mean, they are an 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 order item. There there aren't a lot of them just sitting on a lot idle. But the, at least talking with, again, haven't got into it with the others, but with the Vaccon, if we placed an order now, say, late November, we're probably looking at a early March delivery. It's not too bad.
So it's not like a fire truck that takes two and a half years. That's what, that was my kind of question, like, is it going to be a couple of years? So.
If we added chrome wheels, it'd be an extra eighteen.
Would it be, I mean, I'm I'm, when's our next meeting this month? We're doing the special one, right? Would it be hard to go out and get some of that information like Chris asked for, just to see like what other cities have to say about the two? Or municipalities? Just so we have, hey, actually, let's look at that.
I think that'll give us some hundred percent comfort, for sure.
Yeah, I'm good with that. As long as, it's like I said, if it was like, oh, we have to get the order in by this date or it's going to push, because they close down for the holidays or whatever.
I mean.
It's not like we have to have it tomorrow, but at the same time. Five thousand.
Twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar thing, that like that, we're talking about twenty-five to thousand dollars in savings.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm fine with that. If, I think we table it for the next meeting and if you can get us a little bit more information about the other one and and really probably, I guess, work out the kinks with that too and just see what the final cost would be. Okay. With all the add-ons and.
Absolutely.
But I think one of those two sound like a really good option to me. We need to do anything?
Yeah, I think we have to make a motion table.
Okay. Uh, can I just say, what do you want me to say? Okay, easy. A motion to table this until the next meeting.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor? Opposed? Excuse me.
I guess we never ask PJ.
All right, next item on the agenda, consider approval of the purchase of a replacement shade canopies and associated structural repairs from Landmark Aquatic. And Mr. Spear, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sticking with the Capitol Projects theme of this evening, this is another, another Capitol project. The the shade canopies at the Aquatic Center are original to the facility. And they, they need to be replaced. Kind of two components, that the shade canopies themselves, that that fabric material, kind of see in some of these pictures, they've got holes in them. The picture on the right, that canopy is supposed to be white. It is no longer white and some of those holes are actually, so each year preseason, the staff gets out to clean those with a pressure washer to try to get the the dust and the mildew and 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 things off and and kind of clean and brighten those. The fabric has become so old and brittle and deteriorated that the pressure washer then blows holes in in the material. So they've, they've done their time and and need to be replaced. Also, it's also an opportunity for us to maybe get a little more current with the color scheme. The the teal color shown on the left was very fashionable. When the Aquatic Center was first opened, it kind of dates the facility now. What we're proposing is a, both a, what I would consider a more classic and keeping with the rest of the facility, that kind of bright royal blue color like all the deck chairs out there have. Second piece of this project is some of the structural repairs and and remediation. So you see that picture in the in the center, there's just some rust. Some cases, some fairly significant rust, starting to bloom it and on some structural welds. So cleaning those up, redoing the welds where necessary and at the very least, scrape the rust away, re-prime it, repaint it in those spots. So between those structural repairs and the new material, that'll be a kind of a complete facelift. Again, this is for all of the shade structures at the facility. My Capitol Projects estimating for this was not nearly as good as the as the previous item. So we estimated it was either a hundred or a hundred and five thousand for replacement of the shade canopies. And solicited bids from eight vendors. The lowest responsive bid came back at forty-nine thousand, forty-seven and just under forty-eight thousand. So that was very, very welcome news. And and actually, we'll probably be coming back at a future meeting with some additional repairs and upgrades at the Aquatic Center to use part of that unspent Capitol Project money that was originally earmarked for this project. So solicited bids from eight vendors. Couple of them, we didn't get a response from. Some others gave us a price for the structural repairs, but not for the canopy material. Some gave us a price for the canopy material and not the, not the structural repairs. Landmark Aquatic offered both at the at the lowest price. We even looked at, all right, what if we the companies that offered just the structural repairs, who was the low price there and just the shade structure? Could we go with two different vendors and get a and get a cheaper price? And and Landmark was was still the lowest and we only have one company to deal with. No opportunity for finger pointing on who's responsible for what. So staff recommends approval of the Landmark Aquatic bid in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand. That gives us just a little bit of of cushion rounding in there. Happy to answer any questions, yeah.
I'm just glad to see this happening. It's another one of those things that, you know, we don't necessarily like to do, but I've noticed the mold and mildew kind of, well, mildew really on on the canopies and stuff over the last couple of years. I know they tried to clean them and bleach them as much as they can, but there's only so much you could do when the material starts to deteriorate. So and it'd be nice to have them all matching and look look fresh and stuff, so yeah. Another one of those necessary things.
It's an amazing range of costs here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess when you price, you don't really want to do it, I guess, but I thought this is really good pricing based off of, I was in my HOA years ago, like in two thousand fifteen, I think we paid this much for like three canopies. Yeah, it was the same thing. We had rotted out, you know, bottoms and stuff, so. I thought when I was looking at, I was like, man, this is really good pricing. What we're getting.
I actually had the same thought, but so my question, most of our structure is staying there and being rehabbed, right?
Right.
Okay. That's where we're getting a good. Because we're keeping the metal poles and all that structure and we're just replacing the canopy. So that's what reduces your costs quite a bit.
And and I think it it absolutely helps justify putting the money in now before those structures are so far gone that you're replacing everything. If we stay on top of it, we can keep these at much more manageable.
The canopies, you should be able to get another ten years out of. Hopefully, the structures can stay good for that long, but with the with the rehab. Curious about when the install would be? And I, there's a big labor piece of their bid too. I'm I'm assuming that that's installing the canopies also?
Yes.
Not just the rehab for the structure?
Correct, that is, that is turnkey.
Before next season.
Yep, that's, that is why we're bringing it now. It's it's to get, it it'll probably by the time they order material, I don't know that we will get it in the in the fall, so it'll probably be a springtime, but but by placing that order now, we can absolutely have.
We don't need to put them up before March.
Fairly custom, aren't you?
Well, just we get it, get it on the books now that can't, you know, if we were to wait till the spring to get it on the books, then we can get behind all the other people trying to do their tools, so.
Yeah, there's about a four to six week lead time on on the material. So once we give them the the purchase order and we're at least four to six weeks out and then they've got to schedule it. So it'll be a springtime project. And we're at least four to six weeks, uh, out and then they've got to schedule it. So it'll be a springtime project.
We, uh, we leave the canopies up year round, don't we?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty labor intensive. Most of the manufacturers recommend you leave them up. They. You you probably are going to do more damage to them trying to take them down and put them up.
I I know that for sure. Reinstall is is a nightmare, so.
Is there any kind of covers you can get with them to help with that?
For?
For the canopies? Isn't there covers you can put over them?
Yeah.
For the winter time?
Usually snow. Weight, snow weight is the biggest problem with them.
Yeah, I I don't know. I'll, I'm not sure. I'll do a little research to see if there is a a cover or something that can keep. You know, keep some of the. It it's, you know, the UV damage as much as it even.
Deteriorates the strength and then when you get heavy snow, wet snow that sits on there, the weight, you just can't hold it.
Yeah.
Stretches it out and stuff. Any other questions or comments? We haven't called on you much, PJ. You have any questions or comments on anything? Appreciate it. Alright, with that, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the purchase of replacement shade canopies and associated structural rehabilitation for the Spring Hill Aquatic Center. From Landmark Aquatic in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars and authorize the mayor and staff to execute a contract and associated documents.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, sir. That ends our formal council action at this time. Move on to discussion item. First item on the agenda is TYR Tactical Body Armor Purchase with Captain Khan. You have the floor.
Thank you. It's good to be back up here again. This is a topic that's pretty near and dear to my heart. I've had two friends shot and killed, uh, in the line of duty here in the metro in the last ten years that, um. Modern scalable body armor would have saved. Uh, this is something that I've worked on since I've come to Spring Hill and. Uh, this is the final form. I'll try not to rehash the book that I wrote you guys about this. I know it was long. Um, so I made a nice short PowerPoint to try to walk you through some of that. Uh, the gist is this, uh, of this is that modern body armor needs have changed for law enforcement, both in what we're required to carry. Uh, on our bodies and the types of threats that we're facing. So twenty years ago, you had officers that were wearing something that was called Level Two Body Armor. Uh, sometimes Level Three A. What that is, uh, is a little bit thinner, uh, body armor that will protect from. Regular handgun threats, nine, your nine millimeters, your forty calibers, uh, three fifty-seven with a lot of like physical damage if you're hit with one. As time has gone on, they've gone on to Three A, which has a little bit more protection, but not against some of the modern high velocity handgun rounds and not rifle rounds. In the last decade or so, law enforcement has started facing rifle threats far more frequently, uh, including here in the metro. I went to an awards ceremony today, actually for the metro, where several of the stories involved officers either taking fire from, being injured by or killed by rifle fire. Um, so it has been my goal to start, uh, issuing protection from rifles to our officers. There we go. Uh, this just shows the various threat levels here. Um, some of the purposes of this, again, I I want to enhance the protection levels that we have now. As well as the comfort for our officers, because they are required to carry a lot more things on there than twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, you may have your firearm, uh, one or two handgun magazines, handcuffs and a couple of rings for your, uh, batons, you know, something like this here. Uh, nowadays, we're carrying tasers, body cameras, uh, the armor, handgun, couple of magazines, medical equipment. Um, we've gone from having about ten pounds per officer of carry load to between fifteen and thirty-five. What we've done with that is bring our, uh, equipment up onto our bodies so that we're wearing a lot more of it on our, uh, shoulders. Instead of our hips. With that though, some of the first attempts at these body armors were basically based on old military style armor. They weren't very practical. They weren't comfortable and they weren't scalable. Um, our goal is to move into the modern era with that. We want to replace some of our aging systems. Uh, some of those systems are not very adjustable. Uh, we have officers that even with their vests fully adjusted, still have, uh, low cut areas where their vital organs are exposed. Uh, and then we want to standardize. We have four and technically if you count this under vest type style, five different types of body armor that we have issued through our department right now. Uh, law enforcement strives to be a lot more uniform. So with that, we want to have a singular body armor that we know is going to be around for a while. That's going to be durable and it's going to look very similar so that all of our officers have a neat professional and uniform appearance. Uh, some of the background here, the body armor is a standard nationwide. Um, it's a requirement. We have a policy that requires people to wear it on any contact. Because it is important. Um, again, we're we're looking at some of the modern threats that are evolving and how can we protect our officers from those threats? So, uh, when I got here, I started some research in twenty twenty-three, I started implementation of a project. And then, uh, moving into this year, I finished that project with a lot of research, um. And started working on vendors to to get different quotes for different types of body armor. What we identified in this study are the basic needs. Weight, we want to reduce weight. Modularity, we want something that will fit all body types and it's, uh, able to change with someone's body type. Um, right now, the vest that we use are custom cut for the person at the time that they're measured. If that person gets bigger or smaller, uh, which we all know as human beings, that happens to us, that that vest isn't going to fit. Um, what you might have is if someone grows, they will end up with gaps in their armor. Uh, those gaps, like I was just talking about, uh, scalability here, led to the death of an officer just in this July. So this is something that's very important. Um, also comfort, we want our officers to be comfortable. We want them to be able to work a twelve hour shift, uh, wearing all this without having to have extra strain on their knees, hips and back. Uh, protection, obviously, we want to up that threat protection level because we are facing different types of threats nowadays than we used to. And then durability, we want something that is going to give us the best bang for our buck, something that lasts longer, that will look nicer longer. And that we know will be made into the future so that we don't have different types of armor that look different being issued to people. So what we evaluated through this, uh, were Angel Armor, Tier Tactical and RTS. Angel Armor is the Flex Elite System. They're a newcomer to law enforcement, uh, and there are a couple of agencies here in the metro that have just adopted them. They haven't been around long enough to evaluate how they hold up to the rigors of policing. Because they are relatively new company, but they offer an all encompassing package with both handgun and rifle protection. Next is Tier Tactical. Uh, they have been in the game for a while. They provide armor to the military and to law enforcement across the nation. They started out doing primarily SWAT team body armor and have moved into patrol body armor. Um, they're offering is the Epic DSX system. Again, it's a full system that includes rifle and handgun protection. And the next is RTS Tactical, the Rico system. Uh, they offer both. Um, one of the downfalls that we've noted with, uh, RTS is that they recently had their NIG certification pulled for one of the rifle plates. Which kind of took them out of our our search. Um, this is just a basic breakdown of what we found when we were examining them. So started with protection, which was one of the, uh, most important things on our list. Uh, both Angel Armor and Tier Tactical had good, excellent protection. RTS was moderate. Uh, modularity. Tier Tactical was far and away the most modular. Part of that is that they were the only offering that has a ballistic cover buns. So I talked to you guys about. An officer changing size either up or down. Uh, their cover bun has ballistic material in it so that if there is a gap in that armor. It's still covered by that ballistic cover bun. They're the only one that comes with that standard. Um, comfort, we had our officers test each and every one of these vests and far and away Tier Tactical is the one that they dubbed the most comfortable. Durability, uh, Tier Tactical, I I got three bids on these, but they are a sole source distributor. Part of that is because of the material they manufacture their vests out of. It's a Kevlar woven material. Uh, it's actually rated at ten years to twelve years per carrier. Our standard carriers that we're buying now are rated for about five. Secondary to that, their body armor is warranted for six years where the standard is five years. So buying one of these vests buys an extra year of time on that vest. Uh, with the carrier lasting for an additional six years beyond that, instead of having to buy a new carrier, every time we buy a new armor. We would buy the carrier and then replace armor in it once, then buy a new carrier. That gives us twelve years out of a carrier instead of five. Uh, NIG certification, they were the only one that has a full NIG certification, both for their plates and for their body armor. And their cost actually somehow ended up being the lowest. Uh, through all that, they ended up being the lowest. So, uh, price breakdown there for you, Angel Armor, again newcomer, highest cost, uh, and then RTS, just a step behind tier. Again, with that lack of certification for their plate though, it kind of took them out of the race for us.
Yeah.
Um, again, Tier Tactical probably, probably the frontrunner through all that, uh, both in terms of testing and then reaching out to other agencies. Seeing what they felt about it and what our officers felt about it. So with that, uh, our recommended armor system is going to be the Tier Tactical Epic DSX system. It is the lightest and thinnest system. Um, it has NIG certification and actually extends that in the FBI protocols. It's the only stab resistant vest as well. It's easily configured to different body shapes and sizes. One of the most important things here though is that it's not custom cut. It's measured by sizes, large, extra large, medium, small. Meaning that if we have an officer leave or retire, we can reuse that body armor by scaling it to fit the next person. Um, again, if someone changes sizes, we can also just scale it to fit them. It's very, very adjustable. Um, again, rifle threats, this is one of the ones that stops all of the rifle threats that were commonly encountered in law enforcement. And as we discussed, the warranty is a year longer than every other body armor manufacturer. And the carriers are meant to last twice as long as any other body armor manufacturer. Um, again, this has been adopted by many agencies in the metro. Miami County actually just adopted this vest. Um, and SWAT teams across the metro have been using it for about fifteen years. The company has longevity. We know that they're going to be around and that they'll be making this model for years. As a fiscal impact, um, my recommendation would be, uh, cost not to exceed two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per officer. The bid came in at less than that, uh, but just in case we have any shipping changes, um, I wanted to go a little bit higher than what the bid was. The quote cost is two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and sixteen cents per officer. At nineteen officers, that's a total of forty thousand four hundred and sixty-two, not to exceed forty thousand eight hundred and fifty again, in case there are some shipping changes. Um, the funding source for this would actually be overages from the twenty twenty-five budget because as Rhonda likes to point out, we are very good budgeters. Um, we run everything to the line and.
I like how you put that in there, man. The PD sure.
Hey, we gotta talk about ourselves sometime, right? Uh, so my recommendation to you guys, when this actually comes up, uh, is to authorize the purchase of Tier Tactical Epic DSX Armor Carriers. With a cost not to exceed two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per officer. And do we have any questions?
Uh, I'll just be the first to say that I really like this. I think, you know, it's it's officers are already putting their line. You know, their life on the line for us and whatever we can do to make them safer and more comfortable and be able to do their job better. I just like the, like the modularity of it and everything. It's just, just looks like a really good system and I know it's utilized by especially. Federal departments all over the country. Definitely the number one, number one, uh, pick out there. So, yeah, I like it.
Yeah, every federal agency has adopted tier. They don't use that that specific vest. There's a slightly different, but every federal law enforcement agency uses this company.
I'll say that one looks like the ones you see on the outside. So will you guys wear it over or under or how are these?
Uh, over.
Over, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, that's what it looks like as far as like when we see county and stuff. Yeah, to me, as far as pictures go, not knowing much about it, it looks the safest out of all of them. And to be the cheapest too, it works out.
Yeah, which really surprised me to be honest with you.
I like the fact you don't have to get it specialized for somebody it's by size.
That that is the biggest sell because that's something that we've struggled with in law enforcement. Um, you know, I can tell you the last round of this, we ordered. We had to send one back six times.
Oh, wow.
Because there was a measurement issue or a size change and, uh, before that officer was even able to wear that vest, we sent it back six times.
And this is just a one time cost. It's not a ongoing or there's no maintenance cost or anything like that?
Every six years, we would do body armor and then every twelve years we would do carriers.
Okay, but.
Uh, that's that's standard.
Nothing annual.
Uh, it would be once and then every six years for the armor.
Yeah.
And the armor costs are are about, I'd have to get a secondary quote on just the armor, but it's about eight hundred dollars per armor set per officer.
That's the last of half.
Armor in there.
So can the armor be upgraded? Let's say we unrealistically have threats that are more than this is rated for. How easily is it?
Yeah, so if, uh, if, let's say that we're facing a a larger rifle threat, yeah, you take the plate out, put the new one in.
Okay.
Um, along with that, these come with the buckle system. So, um, what we've discussed, just internally policy wise. Um, you can have different placards that you could put on there. So let's say that we have an active shooter. You would snap in a medical placard that has more medical supplies than you carry on your person. And you could have one person with extra ammunition, one person with extra medical supplies, uh, one person with extra tools that, you know, they can just go to a car, snap that in and then go. Uh, that's part of the modularity of that system.
Yeah, cool. Well, that's one thing I noticed about with the molly system. There's so many different attachment sites versus the other two ones didn't have nearly as many.
Yeah, and we and we have had some struggles. We we tried some laser cut molly vests, which the other two were laser cut. Um, and they they have not held up. Again, with Angel Armor, they haven't been around long enough for for me. I talked to the agencies that use them, but. They haven't had them out on the streets long enough to see if they're having the same issues that we had with our laser cut vests.
Well, I like that these ones are widely used. That means they'll be around for a while and makes it easier for us when we need to upgrades or changes or anything. Yeah.
I just appreciate your presentation. I don't know much about the vest, but how you presented it and everything. You did a good job.
Yeah, and and that's, I know it seems the 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 book I wrote you is a little dry, but I think. May not understand ballistics or don't have experience with it. So at least you have a baseline.
Yeah, easy to understand for a novice like.
Yeah.
Uh, PJ, I wanted to give you an opportunity. I know you've been a law enforcement officer before, so I'm sure you probably have some insight on this.
I, uh, I did forget to mention the shoulder straps and shoulder pads are also ballistic.
Nice.
Nice, cool.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Um, did I don't remember. Did you already say, what's the lead time on these? Like if we were to order?
Uh, it's it's about ninety days.
Ninety days.
So if we order, they send someone out to, uh, walk through and say, okay, you're a size large, you're a size extra large. Um, the lead times were shorter, but they're equipping the entire federal government, so, uh, that brought them up a little bit.
And then also, is there any type of warranty? I'll let's say one of them breaks.
Yeah, the warranty, so if if we have like a, you know, a malfunction with the vest itself, that warranty is the life of the vest. Uh, the armor is warranty for six years.
Very cool. I as I assume so, but I just want to make sure that that we were covered in that.
So when when will you bring this back for? For purchase? Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay, alright, cool.
Uh, and I I will say, I I wore one of these vests, the the original version of it. We weren't cool enough to have the buckles yet, but, uh. I wore one for seven years on SWAT and I I can say it is a very comfortable vest.
I think that's more important than we really consider because you're in it for a long day and. As somebody who's already probably getting irritated by everybody they come in contact with, you don't want to have an extra thing to make it more irritated. So.
Well, and just, I think also something, at least for me, I've I've been in construction my whole life and wore a. A tool belt for years and years and years around my waist. So just the fact that you can move some of that weight off your waist up to your shoulders and and. Spread that out a little bit versus just putting all that weight on your hips, I think makes a makes a big.
It does.
Difference. Alright, well, look forward to, uh, bringing it back here in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next is another discussion item. It's consider approving a ten year agreement with Axon to supply in-car mobile video recorders, body worn cameras, tasers. And additional technologies, staying with the police department here in Chief Sutterby.
Okay, thanks again, Mayor and Council. So, um. This got brought to my attention because as I was looking at the technologies that the police department had, I noticed that. Our contracts with Axon and I'll, do I have, uh? Um, our contracts with Axon actually are three separate contracts here. So you can see on this slide here. That we signed these agreements in twenty-three and twenty-four for a five year period. And at the time we signed these, um, agreements, we got, uh, the the twenty body cameras. Uh, seven taser tens and the car camera systems, which we have nine cars. And so we we outfitted those vehicles and we, uh, did an upfront payment of two hundred and one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents. As you see there. Um, I was talking with several different agencies as I was looking at this. And there are several agencies that are also looking at ten-year agreements with Axon. And really what we're trying to do here is meet five goals. And those five goals are to secure this technology, um, for, uh, long-term. Uh, consolidate these three agreements into one unified agreement. Lock in our best possible long-term cost here. And you'll see the savings. Hopefully, if you, uh, had a chance to review. Some of the information I provided, you'll see the, there's a significant cost savings, uh, for doing this agreement. Um, this also provides opportunity for the department's growth and to be able to outfit, um, officers as we grow. With tasers and body cameras. And then it also incorporates some new, um, tools, including, uh, virtual reality training. Which will really benefit the department and I'll talk about that as we go through the, the slideshow here. So the two main things that we're looking to add are the virtual reality training with the virtual, uh, professional services training. And then also the software, which also includes, uh, license plate readers, which I can talk, answer any questions about those. The all-pro, uh, licenses, which will allow us to, uh, extend, uh, the opportunity for others to be able to redact. Things when we release things to the public or when we have to release things, uh, to different entities. Um, it also allows us to share videos with the district attorney's office that we need to through evidence.com. And it also, uh, gives us an opportunity with these licenses to put up multi-view. So you know, you have the in-car camera, you have the body camera, so as you're reviewing your camera. Or as we are looking at, uh, those from a command staff perspective, we can actually put both, um, views up at the same time. And see it as it's occurring from the different camera angles that are going on at, uh, at the call. So the, the virtual training is exactly what it is, but I think the key thing to this is that, um, one, it's going to allow us to do training. Um, anytime that we have opportunities at the station to do it. The sergeant could lead a training on, um, you know, to help improve our, our handgun skills. Our taser skills, decision-making skills, those rapid and evolving situations where there are these, uh, quick decisions. That need to be made. This kind of training, uh, in a virtual format will help us with those decisions. It's like, maybe some of you have heard that some departments have these, uh, large, uh, decision-making shooting. Um, um, rooms where it's a big screen and you're in a situation and you have to make a decision and it's in real time. Uh, this kind of is the lower scale version of this, but it allows us and it meets our needs as far as a department goes, our size. Um, the other thing it does is it, it allows us to take this to the community. So one of the things that we would love to do is be able to use this to inform the community a little bit more. Uh, as we go out, um, in the coming years to talk about use of force and officer decision-making and what goes into these. To try to educate, uh, those around us on these kind of decisions that the officers have to make. And then put them in the same situation so that they can see how challenging and how difficult sometimes these decisions are. To give them a little bit of more perspective of, from the officer's point of view, what it is that they're, what they're going through. And then obviously, um, the Axon Academy, uh, provides, uh, learning content that's designed to, uh, you know, strengthen the skills. Uh, that we have also. Uh, license plate readers, these are built into the in-car cameras. This is a feature that is available now, but we don't use it currently. Um, and so I would, uh, want this to be one of the features that we have access to. Um, this is something that, again, um, all the agencies around us are already using. We've had a couple of instances here recently where, uh, license plate reads have led to, um, us assisting outside agencies who have them with apprehension of people. Um, in one case, we apprehended armed individuals, uh, on a stolen car investigation at the QuickTrip. Um, a few, maybe about a month ago. And so, um, these are valuable, this is a valuable tool. Um, it's, allows us to not only solve crime, but it also allows us to help our partner agencies solve crime. And in turn, we help keep the whole community safe. So I know there's maybe some questions later in the presentation about, you know, the license plate reader, so I'll be happy to address any of those as we move forward. Um, the transcription and the AI summary tool, so this is a great feature because when we have a video. Um, once it's uploaded to the system, it will translate, um, the conversation between the officer and the, uh, person we're talking to automatically. And so this could be great in, uh, just use of force review. Um, it could be great in, you know, obviously if we were to receive a complaint. That we could, um, see this. It's great if the DA's office says, hey, I'd like that, uh, video trans- transcribed. So we can have it word for word. We're not paying anybody to transcribe it. This technology is already there and it transcribes it for us. The other great feature to this particular, uh, tool is that if we're speaking to someone who speaks a different language. Then this will translate whatever language they're speaking and put it into English. So again, if we're sharing, uh, something with the district attorney's office because we've had to arrest somebody or we're sending something out to be reviewed for charging. We can translate that, um, conversation into, uh, in, into English so that the DA's office can review it. And then make a determination as to whether they're going to charge a case or not. Again, it would also help the municipal court too and, and some of the things that we do when we charge cases through the municipal court, especially if it's a traffic stop with somebody who's a non-English speaker. So the proposal is for the ten-year renewal. This will give us, again, twenty Axon that'll keep it the same. Uh, as it is now, but we'll get four refreshes of those cameras throughout the ten years. So every two and a half years, the upgraded cameras we would get included, any upgrades, any software upgrades, those would come. Um, um, at that two and a half year mark for the life of the, of the agreement. Fifteen taser, uh, I'm sorry, uh, fifteen taser tin handles. Um, and that would also, uh, include, uh, the, what's, I think right now we have seven. So this is going to be, uh, additional tasers, again, providing for growth. We're just adding two more, two more officers. The officers are, the, they check these out each shift, so they're using them, um, um, they're sharing the use of them. And then, um, right now, this, uh, I wanted to, uh, update this a little bit. Because, uh, this proposal has nine in-car cameras, but I had them do a tenth and I'll share that information with you. It's not in your packet. I apologize for that. But as I got to thinking about it, we've had quite a few vehicle crashes lately, as you've probably seen. Um, not luckily of the fault of our own people, uh, people running into the back of us. Last night, we had a deer run into the side of one of our trucks. Um, and so just vehicles being down and as you remember, uh, Captain, uh, Khan came to you. Um, I think we asked for a vehicle, uh, to replace one of our lease vehicles so that it could be put into the fleet as needed. When we needed a backup vehicle because we had a lot of vehicles down. Well, that vehicle doesn't have an in-car camera, so if we were to go with a tenth camera. It would outfit that car with a camera, therefore making it obviously a little bit easier to be able to put back into the fleet. So that we could use it when there's a down car.
Are they keeping the pricing the same with that tenth camera?
That, that'll increase the pricing just a little bit. So, and I'll, I'll, I'll explain that to you here in just a second. So, um, as you can see here, if we just stayed with what I've proposed in your packet with the nine in-car cameras. The twenty, uh, body worn cameras and the tasers were at a six hundred and seventy-six thousand three sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. Uh, the first year, um, would be, um, a sixty-seven hundred dollar. So next year, because we didn't really budget for this, this is something that came up in the review. And as I've talked to different chiefs around the metro who have been working with Axon to do these agreements. Um, and then when I started looking into the savings that we could benefit from with this agreement. Um, we started working with Axon to see how we could reduce the cost of that first year in order to make this, um, feasible. So they gave us credit, obviously, on what we already have in our current contracts. And that lowered that first year number to sixty-seven, uh, a little over sixty-seven hundred dollars. And then annually, the price would be about seventy-five thousand for the next nine years to get to that cost. Now that savings is gonna bring us to, um, and I think actually, let me correct myself. I apologize. I think this number is actually down to six hundred and sixty thousand. Hang on just one second. Yeah, I apologize. So, um, so after this agreement, I went back to Axon and I asked our rep if he could do us. Um, a little bit of a better, um, agreement and he did. So I actually got him on, on the first payment there in twenty-six to, uh, give us a payment of one thousand dollars. And so that would cover twenty-six and then it would be seventy-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Because one of the things that we forgot about was, uh, some of the tax that was included in this. And they gave us the credit for being tax exempt, obviously. So that brought the number down to six hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Now, if we do this now, that'll save us about three hundred and two thousand dollars over the life of the contract. If we were to do it, if we were to do this agreement in twenty-twenty-seven, uh, it would be eight hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven. And if we waited till twenty-eight at the expiration of the contract, it would be about nine hundred and one thousand and, um, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. So we're going to save some significant, um, money by, uh, uh, doing this agreement. Plus, we're going to keep our technology at the gold standard best practice in the industry. Um, most, if not all, I'd have to check my, my facts here, but I can tell you that. Most agencies in Johnson County are using Axon, um, body cameras and in-car cameras. Uh, one agency that I know of was using another company and they just recently switched and went to Axon. Um, and so, uh, this is really the kind of the gold standard in law enforcement and then it's sole source in the sense that. We get our tasers from, they're the only ones that are, uh, making the tasers that we use. So, um, I'll open, uh, I'll stop talking and I'll let you guys ask me any questions that you may have about this.
I know when Adam brought this up, what, it was about six months ago when we did our work session, we kind of started talking about this. I like the savings and everything. I know it's, comes out to about thirty thousand or so more a year than what our current contract had. It looked like, is, what was the cost increase if we didn't add the other services? And how much of it is the actual services difference?
Um, when you're talking about, you mean from?
From the previous, from the current contract to the new one. Um, so if we were just to do a ten-year without adding anything, what was, I'm sure there was an increase there.
Yeah, Jack, uh, Jack's on the line. He's with Axon. Do you, do you know, Jack, can you speak to that?
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to, oh, you can look at it right now. I'm not opposed to it. I'm just wanting to see apples to apples, kind of what the cost difference is and then we can see what we're paying for in difference and. If that makes sense to everybody else.
Yeah, what the, what the new features.
Yeah, cause I like the new features. I just kind of want to know.
It's additional taser units too.
Yeah, so there's a couple more, obviously, hard equipment, but, and then from, from my understanding, our current one. Everything is almost like a lease option, so if something was to go wrong, they get replaced with no additional cost.
Correct, and I should have clarified too, along with, I, I talked about the refreshment on the body worn cameras, but that's the same with the in-car cameras too.
Okay.
The difference will, there'll be two re, uh, there'll be two refreshments with the in-car cameras. Because their life is a little bit, their expectancy is a little bit different.
Okay.
Um, as opposed to the body worn cameras and then the tasers will be, um, upgraded as they come out with new software, new features and things like this. Those will be kind of done as we get that information, but, um, and then the other thing I was going to share with you that the captain reminded me of. It's on the pro licenses. The reason that's important is because right now, uh, uh, the captain is the only one that has the ability to redact video. And when we, sometimes when we get coral requests, we have to redact video. The last one he was sharing with me took sixteen hours of time to re- redact. So if we had other people with access to those features, then we could sh- spread that load to other people who, uh, should be doing those redactions. Um, and maybe relieve some of that responsibility off of the captain to do, so.
Yeah, no, I do remember him bringing that up, but no, I'm, uh, to be clear, I'm not opposed to any of this. I just kind of want to understand the.
And I wanted to share with you too, because you asked me about the tenth camera.
Yeah.
Cost difference there, so we're talking about six hundred and sixty thousand and change with, um.
With the nine.
With the nine. It's gonna jump to, uh, six hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Over the life?
Yeah, over the life, so that's a. Twenty-five thousand, over the life, it's about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five hundred.
A little over twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's a little over twenty-three hundred dollars, uh, a year that we would be spreading it out over.
That's reasonable, okay. Well, I was gonna say, as far as the service goes, is there any additional service cost to having an additional camera or is it, the service is the service? Whether you have two or if you have ten cameras.
The, it'll, that price, that twenty-five thousand increase includes the license plate reader feature of it. All the services that go with it is included in that camera and the refreshment would also be included in that camera, so.
I was just gonna say the AI feature, absolutely love. I mean, let's just get with the times, right?
Yes.
Cause that's just hitting on everything and the time saved probably, I'm not.
I think of the future, we're not ready for this yet because our call volume isn't large enough.
Right.
But they do have a draft one feature where AI will, you can program it to say, hey, I want you to, uh, write this report with some error in it so that you're, obviously the officer has to review it. But basically it's a transcription service and it writes the report for you. And then the officer goes in there and just makes some edits and.
Sure.
Make sure that the report's right. We're just not ready for that and that's an additional cost to what we have now, but this feature will be, uh, perfect for us. And our size right now, so.
And then, um, just briefly, what license plate reader, I'm.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty obvious it reads license plate, but tell me just a little bit more about it. I'm curious.
So license plate readers, um, so the car in the camera will be able to, um, read the license plate. If there's a license plate that's in NCIC, let's say it's attached to a missing person, it's attached to a wanted individual. Any type of entry into NCIC, the officer would get an alert. Um, also, right now, we're with Regis, but we're gonna be moving to OpenFox here pretty soon. Two different systems that return criminal history for the officers when they take your license, go back to the car and they run you. Um, and through the computer systems, that's just terminology that we use to, to get criminal history back. But in any case, we'll get alerts on those people who are wanted. This also allows, um, like, let's say agencies are looking for a particular vehicle because they have probable cause to believe that someone's involved in a crime. These agencies can enter these license plates in the database. The officer then will get a hit on that and will have reason to stop the vehicle and then call that agency to say, hey, we have contact with this individual. You know, what would you like us to do with them? Do you want to come interview them? Do you want to have us tell them about it, release them? You know, the agency will drive that conversation, depending on the crime, obviously, that's involved. For the layperson, um, whose license plate gets read, these aren't, um, these are tools that we just go into. And just randomly, um, you know, run people, you know? There's a reason, um, for running it. And if we activate this particular feature, we'll have a policy in place that says. When you can go in there, when you can look for something, um, and when you can enter something into NCIC or into the database to be able to. You know, locate, uh, leads and. Um, and when you can enter something into NCIC or into the database to be able to, you know, locate uh leads and information on a criminal investigation. And most of it, quite frequently, we tied to, is it an active investigation that we're working, where we have leads? Um, or we have information that we can use the system for to help us create a lead, um, especially on serious crimes. Um, we could set it up to delete license plates at a certain interval. I think the standard is about ninety days. Um, so that information can fall off. That's something that um, um, we could definitely talk about and um, I could come back with a. With a more's uh de- definitive recommendation uh when this goes to you for formal action. That you uh, um, can decide on if that's um what you would like us to do.
Yeah, I think that would be the only worry that some people might have is the privacy.
No, that's, that would be my biggest concern.
You know, an officer may be sitting there scanning everybody's license plate that drives by, you know, just kind of a. Some people may feel like it's an inva- invasion of privacy, depending on how it's used or whatever.
I can tell you, coming from an agency that used this feature and has had this feature in the cars for ten years or more. Um, we set up strict rules um for the use of it. Um, we didn't have any problem with uh people going in there and using it for nefarious. You can't ever rule it out because people do, sometimes people do crazy things, you know, and you have to address those things if uh, if they happen. But that's why we have rules in place to guide those uh decisions, so. But I think really the advantage is, is that as we continue to grow and as we get closer to. Olathe and Gardner and Overland Park, this tool will become um something that we'll need in order to. You know, help keep the community safe.
I could definitely see it being, being an advantage with, especially with multi-agencies, being able to transfer information. As far as, you know, especially with serious crimes, you're looking, you know, for kidnapping, uh abduction, you know, something, something of that matter or violent crime. Where they're looking for somebody to be able to track it a lot faster.
Yeah, and like I said, when um, and again, um, most of it at first I expect will just be us helping other agencies. You know, with stuff that they're looking for uh and needing help finding. Um, but as we grow, we may obviously see it used more to help solve crime within our community, so.
Any other questions, comments?
Was he able to come up with?
Hey, Jack, did you uh? You have the floor.
Thirty two and three.
Yeah, hundred and thirty two.
So about thirteen grand a year for the new softwares. So that's much lower than I thought. That makes it much more worth it in my mind.
Yeah, and I think uh, Jack, don't uh correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with those additional features, we're getting some additional discounts and those.
Yeah.
Adding on those features that are benefiting us.
I think they presented the VR stuff to us before at one point and we.
I don't think we decided to do it last time, yeah.
Yeah, at that time. So I, I don't think this is the first time that we've looked at the VR technology.
Yeah, I think some of the other ones, the AI one definitely is new, at least for us.
Well, I don't, I think he talked about it, but I don't know if we actually, because we were just kind of getting our feet wet with it the first go around.
Yeah.
But Adam's always done a good job of really finding this kind of stuff for us, so it's glad, I'm glad you're here to keep it going with us. Um, that makes it, to me, a lot more reasonable. I was like, well, if the whole. The whole difference was just the, the new, maybe it's not as big a deal, but um, at thirteen thousand a year. Thousand, thousand, yeah, thousand bucks a month technically for. A lot of those features, I think that's probably worth it, especially if you lock it in for ten years and then we. I don't know if he's got more.
I was just gonna say too, probably, and this is what we're finding with the AI feature. I mean, yes, you're still gonna look at it and everything like that, but the amount of time that it's gonna save in staff, overtime and all that stuff. I mean, we're kind of seeing that with documentation, just because of how important it is, but.
Yeah, it's becoming almost required of uh, of the professions we're in, so.
Wouldn't you bring this back to us for, for the contract? Can, can you bring that information that he, that he was talking about?
Yeah, about the privacy.
About, yeah, about the privacy with the, with the license plate readers and maybe some AI stuff, just, just so we have it. So if anybody does have questions to one of us up here, we can have that readily available.
Sure, and the captain reminded me here just too, as a, before we close out on this uh presentation discussion. Um, this will give us unlimited storage. Right now, we have some hella card storage. So we're gonna be saving money as we record more um over the next several years. We're gonna have unlimited storage when it comes to video in the cloud, so that'll be a good, that'll be a good thing too, so.
Cause that adds up fast.
It does. Storage adds up fast, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
You, you guys are planning on using the AI report writer portion?
No, we're gonna just use the AI translation on the backend of things because the, the AI. Redraft report will add. Jack, can you tell?
You need a certain, we probably need a certain amount of reports to make it worth.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just don't think right now we're writing enough reports frequently enough to, to justify it. So I would say let's hold off on that and maybe look at that.
Is that something we can add in five years if we had to, even though the contract's ten?
Yeah, Jack, that's something we can add, isn't it?
Okay, alright, cool. I think this is the right direction.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, I'll bring back those items to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jack.
I think he said Jack.
Alright, next, we'll have another discussion item, uh, Hundred and Ninety First Signalization Project and Mrs. Able, you have the floor.
Okay, wanted to give you guys an update on Hundred and Ninety First Street. Uh, we. Met with uh some of the KDOT leadership last week to discuss the project. Um, this is for the uh traffic signal at Hundred and Ninety First Street and Highway one sixty nine. Uh, we had previously had the um concept approved through KDOT to have a signal. There, um, some of the KDOT uh staff wanted to take a step back. And take a look at some alternatives um and review some of the safety concerns at that intersection to see if there was a better. Alternative rather than um a signal. So they had decided ultimately that a traffic signal was the best alternative for an uh interim improvement. At that intersection, um, just to address some of the safety concerns and give us some time to. Uh, give them time to uh do the K seven corridor study. And to figure out what the long-term strategy would be for that intersection. So since that time, KDOT has provided the city with um some uh comments. We had previously submitted our final plans um so that we could go ahead and move forward with the project. They provided us with some comments and our engineers have been working on getting those revised. Um, so now we're kind of at a fork in the road and we, we're looking for a little bit of guidance from you guys. Uh, during that conversation with KDOT, they mentioned that they still have two million dollars in grant funding that is available. The only catch is, it's not available to, uh, until fiscal year twenty seven. Which means the earliest we can take this out to bid is July first of next year. So we could delay the project six months and take it out to bid July first. Uh, we, we wouldn't be able to put it out on the street until July first, so it wouldn't. Uh, that, that would probably put us back six months in order to get two million dollars. The total cost of the project is, the construction side of it is estimated at. Uh, about three point two million dollars. So that's a good chunk of what we would be looking at um. For the project. The other option is, um, the city does have funding available in the twenty twenty five CIP. Uh, we fully programmed um the project. We have um three uh, three point two five million dollars. Available in our CIP uh in order to move forward with the project. We could take it out to bid. Uh, once we get final approval from KDOT, which hopefully will be here in the next few months. Maybe in the next month, um, we can go ahead and get it, get that out to bid. Like I said, we could save six months and fully fund it with the city's uh budget as we had originally uh included in our CIP. Or we wait six months and get.
The two million.
Two million dollars from KDOT. Um, and again, we're delayed six months. So we were trying to figure out and, and slicing and dicing it every which way as far as um. Maybe the city goes ahead and purchases the, the poles. Which may have a long lead time to get the materials. Ultimately, i- it works best if we just go ahead and bid this out altogether as one contract. Um, and not try to slice and dice it any which way. So those are the two options that we're faced. Um, it's kind of. Damned if you do, damned if you don't. You know, we, we could move forward with this um now, we have the funding. But um, it's very enticing to wait six months and get that two million dollars.
This is something that I know we've all been working on for a long time. I personally have been working on it for four years now. Um, something we all want to see done. I'm anti to get it started immediately, but two million dollars is a huge chunk.
I could do a lot with that two million dollars. We could put it on other projects.
So as much as I would love to get this started. You know, within a month or so, as soon as we have authorization, man, two million dollars, you know, if it was, if it was a couple hundred thousand dollars or something, I think it'd be a pretty easy decision. Uh, but two million dollars is a big old chunk to. Leave dangling out there just to wait six months, so. I, I would lean more, more towards that as much as I want to get started on that. That's a, that's a massive amount.
Did you say the total project cost is three point two million?
Approximately, yeah. Our engineer's estimate was about three point one six and we've got a total of three point two five in our budget. So around about three point two million dollars.
And that's the only thing we're wait, I mean, the taking out to bid, this is, that's the next, that's, there's nothing else that we can do.
As soon as, as soon as we get final approval from uh KDOT, that everything is, you know, the final plans are approved. Maybe a few revisions, you know, we could take this out to bid, hopefully by the end of this month, beginning of next month.
So is that six months starting today or six months starting July first?
July, yeah.
We would just have, we, we wouldn't be able to put it out to bid until July first.
Okay, so it's, it's more than six.
It's more than six, but I, I was factoring in the fact that we don't have KDOT final.
Yeah, once the approval comes in, it'll probably be five or six months.
Mm-hmm, cause it may take them a month.
Is that a guaranteed six? Or do we still have to apply?
Will you apply July first?
We have the money.
No, I'm talking about the two million, you can't apply for it till July first, right?
We have the grant fund.
Oh, we're approved for it.
Yeah, we've, we've already been approved for the grant, we just can't, we can't have it until July.
Well, I have another wrench to throw in it. What about Hundred and Eighty Third?
Right. We talked about that.
We've, we've discussed that. Um, that's kind of one of our recommendations is probably to wait till July first. Because I think probably first quarter of twenty six, we'll probably be coming back to the governing body. Asking to proceed with Hundred and Eighty Third Street. And with the additional two million, that'll make it a lot easier for us to be able to do Hundred and Eighty Third Street also.
But this is my question, do we really want to put two stoplights in?
I think.
Or do we want to look at Hundred and Eighty Third and then frontage roads to get to Hundred and Ninety First?
I, I think that's a discussion we can have offline.
Cause that's something I've started thinking about that I'm like, I wonder if that's really the better way to go, because. Who's gonna get the overpass first? Is that Hundred and Seventy Fifth and then having so many stoplights and right there is tough.
I think initially, the, the temporary, and I'll say temporary could last ten to fifteen years.
Or twenty, thirty years.
Twenty, thirty years. Um, I think Hundred and Ninety First and Hundred and Eighty Third are probably more signalized intersections. Hundred and Seventy Fifth at some point will become a.
That's my thought, that's, so that's my thought is if we maybe focus on Hundred and Eighty Third instead, since we're kind of like, well, it's not gonna be right now anyway. See what it looks like as far as building out ways to make it so it stays a highway rather than turning into Metcalf.
I, I think it's, it's beyond that, I think at this point. Um, the, the interchanges are between twenty to twenty-five million dollars each. If, if you do the smaller footprint, um, they, they jump up to around thirty-five to forty million. Um, some of the, right now, Hundred and Eighty Third Street actually has, I think, all four corners of it. Available for uh right-of-way purchase. Um, but, but there's. Other issues that are coming up that um will probably force this one way or the other. Um, different developments on both sides of the highway, so I think. In the next six months, we're gonna have more clarity on some of those projects and that, that may drive. Hundred and Eighty Third or Hundred and Ninety First a different direction.
Yeah.
I know none of us are in love with stoplights at any of those intersections. But I think it's not really even arguable that a stoplight is more safe than what we have right now.
Well, that's my thing is, do we look at more shutting down access at certain areas and putting frontage roads and stoplights at?
Yeah.
More strategic areas than just putting stoplight after stoplight after stoplight.
And then the other big consideration is obviously the cost.
Yeah.
Just killer. I mean, twenty-five million versus three point two million is.
Well, I'm not talking about putting overpasses in, I know.
No, no.
Talking about strategically putting things together rather than just putting more stop. Cause I think that's the biggest concern I've heard lately, because obviously I've had to talk to a lot of people recently and. That's the big thing is like, I don't want a million stoplights on there, which I. It doesn't bother me as much, but I know it's a big concern for a lot of people. So I started thinking through, I'm like, well, we have so much already industry at Hundred and Eighty Third. Could we figure out ways to make it so that Hundred and Eighty Third and Hundred and Ninety Ninth are kind of controlled intersections? Hundred and Ninety First becomes a, either closed off or right-in, right-out onlys and then.
Basically pinch the middle.
And then basically either connect Webster or, and then finish that Lone Elm so that people can get both way. I mean, and there's a lot of options there, but. That's just kind of my thought rather than just throwing up two.
It really depends on the, the developments that come in.
Yeah.
Um. In certain areas, the frontage road probably works with certain developments, it won't work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they may have the, the complete use of that property.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll, it'll be really dependent upon some of those projects.
Yeah.
And a lot of those intersections were reviewed during the SS four A.
Yeah, no, I know, we kind of looked at that.
And we, we looked at that, um, frontage road, I think was one of the recommendations for one of the southern areas like at hundred, uh, two hundred and seven. Two hundred and fifteen street, one of those uh had the frontage road to help alleviate some of the pressure. I think that's a better application of that. And again, KDOT's gonna do the study of the K seven corridor right now, so. This buys us a little bit of time. It gives us a way to address some of the safety issues. And you've got sight distance issues too, because you've kind of got a crust right there that it's, it's really hard to see. And I think the signal is the one thing that makes the most sense for an interim. Having back-to-back signals at Hundred and Eighty Third and Hundred and Ninety First Street, yeah, it may not make sense right now, but in. A year and a half, whenever they're in, it might make more sense.
Well, it's not just those two, Hundred and Ninety Ninth is next, so you got three now. But yeah, I was, I'm, I'm four waiting and I think in that time, we need to also look at other options that are not just two more stoplights, but. Maybe we look at a different setup if we have that extra couple of months to, to figure that out, but. I don't think we stop moving forward with KDOT because we want to make sure they don't hold us up anymore either.
But the stoplights can be all timed.
Oh, yes, and so they've got the operation green light, which is something that Mid-America Regional Council has.
Yeah.
Where they time the stoplights. We can adjust the timing ourselves. Um, one of the things, one of the caveats with this is as we start to construct these streetlights, we're gonna be the ones maintaining them. So we're gonna have the ability to uh change that timing so that you can have a better um queuing going through those lights. But ultimately, I would love to have this as part of an extension to some of the lights that are already on the OGL system. In Olathe so that all of the lights from the interstate all the way down south will be timed. So that, you know, once you get it, you hit a green, you'll always hit a green.
Yeah.
What do you think, Kristen?
Go for it.
Oh, we threw that on the table first and foremost. We asked if we could do, we tried. Uh, we tried everything. Um, no, we asked to see if we could advance the project and then we would fully fund it and then we would just ask for reimbursement July first. And uh, put that out there. Heck, we can even wait until. And uh, put that out there. Heck, we can even wait until December first of next year if they really wanted us to hold the bag for that long. Uh, and then get reimbursed after that. They, it, it's very specific, it's very specific. The original agreement was to do that, but with the specific funding that KDOT has available to us, there are. Uh, specific rules and um, the, um. The year that it is uh, obligated is for fiscal year twenty-seven, so the money would not be.
Well, this was the grant we applied for, it's just, it's not available till twenty-seven.
We had thought that it was gonna be, that they would have um, other money available so that they could shift some things around. But they, they aren't able to do that now. So uh, it's just, that's, we, we again tried everything. It's just the timing of it. Oh, I, I tried to slice and dice this every which way and it came down to, I can't put it out on the street until July first. In order to get that two million dollars.
I would agree waiting. I do think we need signal, signalization there, I just do. I just think we need to do something.
I think so too, especially with the school right there, as much as I don't like stoplights any more than the next guy, but with multiple schools within. You know, a mile to a mile and a half of that intersection, I think that's the only option currently. And yeah, we'd all love an overpass.
Well, that, I guess that's my other question, can we shift that two million to a hundred eighty-third?
That's always a possibility, we could talk to KDOT about it and find out if that's an opportunity.
I, I think that's some.
Lane and I talked about that earlier today.
I, I think that's an opportunity we can talk about, um, that's something we've definitely discussed. I, I think there's things coming up that, once we know about those different projects, I think that's gonna help answer our question on this.
Cuz I would, I would hate to lose that two million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what's getting me is two million out of three point two is almost sixty-three percent of the construction costs.
That's a big portion.
That is a great bargain.
We're gonna do everything we can to, if, if there's a way to restructure this to move forward. Uh, the other component of this that we really haven't talked about is, we're probably not gonna be able to build anything in January. February, maybe early March, just because of the weather. So there's a few throwaway months in there, um, I, I agree a hundred percent, I mean, I drive this intersection every single day, multiple times a day. It's horrible, um, the, the sooner we can do something, the better, uh, it's that two million dollars that. If, if we can figure out a way to, to flip the project, um, and do a hundred eighty-third. First or something like that, I think we should do that.
That's my thought, I was like, hey, let's do something, um. And even if it's the short term that says, hey, this is, has worked out great, and then we finally get the other funding and then we move forward with it, but. Yeah, I think, I like PJ's idea of not waiting and, and figuring out how we can do something now and then, um. As long as I.
Know that'll transfer.
Well, my, my thought is too, I mean, maybe we, maybe we just move forward with the hundred eighty-third first so they have some sort of option, but. The other question too is, can we do something in the meantime to stop? Through traffic to that, like, put up some sort of barriers that there's no through traffic?
Cuz I was adding.
Like, will they let us do that in the meantime?
We could try, that's a state highway.
They won't let us do.
Yeah, I mean, not saying we couldn't, but we could, we could check, um.
Well, I'm just saying as a, as in the meantime type thing, just so that we can.
There's a lot of traffic goes east-west through there.
There's a lot, especially that middle school and night school over there.
And, and then what you're doing is you're changing traffic patterns to probably where they're gonna go up and do a U-turn. Um, either south or north of that intersection, which is gonna create probably even more issues. I don't know that there's a good answer, but we're, we're definitely gonna look at everything we can to, to keep both those projects moving. The other issue is a hundred and eighty-third street, um, has preliminary approval until midsummer.
I'll just say, that one needs to get moved, yeah.
So we've, we have to move on it, so we'll be bringing that back off.
But here's kind of a thought, maybe there's a. If we have to wait a hundred ninety-first and we wanna do something, we look at moving forward quicker, a hundred ninety-third. Finish off Woodland to make it a little bit easier for people to get around in the meantime, and then we eventually put in the hundred ninety-first once we can get that additional funding. And I know that there's all those businesses over there would love to do it too, so I'm sure we can get some sort of kick in from all them to help pay for it. And I know there's already industry that wants to go in there, but they won't unless there's a stoplight, so. That's why to me, I'm like, I would rather maybe redirect traffic that way in the short term until we can start the hundred ninety.
I would like to at least find out if we can transfer, if that two million dollars can be transferred to a hundred eighty-third, cuz I think that would be, if it can for sure, then. I don't have a problem at all with moving forward without that, but if, if we can't, that's a, that's a big decision.
So everybody's okay with two stoplights now, cuz I thought we weren't.
Well, no, I don't like two stoplights, but if, if that's what everybody else is, I'm gonna try and find the best.
Currently on K seven, I think there's six. I think there's currently six stoplights, I may be off one, uh, from a hundred ninety-ninth to basically I thirty-five. So that corridor.
So we're adding two.
Yeah, I mean, twenty years ago, KDOT had the opportunity. To, to either realign K seven or to make interchanges. Um, it, it's gonna be really difficult to, to go back in there and retrofit.
So it's too late, they missed the window.
Too much development in the way.
My concern with a hundred eighty-third street is, um, we were able to, you know, get the grant and justify. Everything with a hundred ninety-first street, we had the accident data, we had all of the information that was in the grant application. That was heavily weighed with the benefit cost analysis. I don't know if we have the same accident data.
I don't, I don't think we do.
I don't know if we have this, it, but I don't know if that's the only criteria that that application was based off of, so it may not be an apples-to-apples comparison.
And that's what I'm worried about is, yes, a hundred eighty-third is a busy intersection, but it's nowhere near what a hundred ninety-first is, and I just, I just have a hard time believing. That they'd be willing to.
To shift the money there.
Shift it over there with the same, with completely different criteria.
But it is at least worth asking.
Yeah, it's worth, worth checking for sure.
But I think we try to find a way to move forward with something quickly. And if it's, hey, we wanna not forego the two millions, let's do something at a hundred eighty-third to help alleviate. I think that's a good, good interim for that six-month wait or seven-month wait that we're gonna have to be able to do a hundred ninety-first.
I think the sooner we can move, the better. I mean, whether it's paying the full three point one now, I think that's. Gets, gets it done before school next year, whereas if you wait till July first, it's happening during school starting. And I'd rather have it done before then.
That's true.
I'm not willing to pay the additional two million.
It's already budgeted.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, it's still two million bucks.
The total project cost is probably gonna be that. Say close to seven million for both intersections. So it, it, it's, it cuts our total cost down to, you know, five million versus seven, which I think. I, I think a lot of things in the next sixty to ninety days, we'll have some answers from KDOT and, and some other things, so, yeah.
Well, thank you guys for your feedback, um, we'll get with KDOT to see if there's a way to transfer that. Rhonda's gonna dig in the couch cushions to figure out how we're gonna build the projects.
Couch cushions are empty.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, that ends the discussion items for this time, we'll move on to announcements and reports, um, I don't think I have anything. Other than I just wanna congratulate everyone that won in the, won in the election, um, those of you that won, so. And, and overall, I think it was a pretty good election, it was pretty clean, there wasn't a lot of nasty stuff out there, so appreciate everybody being. Having a good campaign and uh, yeah, congratulations to all the winners. Mr. Young.
No report.
Mr. Throne. Mr. Peel.
No report.
Mrs. Vedeck.
I just wanted to voice my apology to the PD and everybody impacted by Loki's death. I just, I feel really bad about that, I know what that, yeah. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Grant.
No report.
Mr. Massey. Chief Sutterby.
We good? Man, I'm, I'm having macrophone problems tonight, I don't. Um, I appreciate the uh, condolences for Loki tonight from all of, all of you, thank you very much. On a brighter note, I did wanna share that two of our officers who were recognized by the PD and this council. Um, for life-saving awards, Officer Jeremy Johnson and Officer Madison McGill received a Metro Chief's. Life-saving award earlier today at their award ceremony. Captain Khan and Sergeant Gutierrez accompanied the two officers who invited family members to the event. And um, we almost made Lauren Halifax cry as she read the life-saving award for these two officers. So anyway, uh, great story, great job by those officers, and I just wanted to make you aware of that because that's a metro-wide award, so several. Several different uh, submissions get submitted uh, every year and we were uh, lucky enough to have our officers recognized.
That's awesome, congratulations to those officers and uh, thank you for your service, we appreciate you guys, that's awesome to, we have. We have a great group of guys and, and ladies here with the Spring Hill Police Department, I'm very proud to have them with us, and I just think we have an excellent department and uh. Thank you, Chief, for everything you do for them, and thank you to those guys that stepped up. Mrs. Abel.
No report.
Madam Clerk. Mrs. Dunn.
No report.
Mrs. Jones. Mr. Spear.
Just wanted to follow up, uh, there was an item on the consent agenda tonight, uh, just making you aware of an emergency purchase. Uh, for some storm, storm sewer, storm culvert replacement in a sidewalk that goes over the top of that along Nickel Street. Just wanted to give you an update, that, that contractor started uh, last week, they're more than halfway finished with that work, the uh. Walls of the new box have been uh, poured and uh, so they, that should be wrapping up in the next week or so.
Yep, I saw, they're doing a pretty good job. Um, that was actually something I, I recognized, I was walking along that sidewalk and there was. It, it's about probably an eight or nine foot drop, and there was a whole chunk of sidewalk missing. Where you, a little kid could literally step on that and fall down eight or nine feet, so. I had, they roped it off right away and, and got, got to work on it, so I appreciate you moving on that quickly cuz it was definitely a major safety hazard. Um, so glad, glad we're getting on that, so, but yeah, they're doing a great job on it. Uh, also, the doing, uh, I don't know if you guys have noticed, the library, that was another. Project that I was involved in with getting that approved for the library there, the Johnson County Library, uh, but they're, they're, they're moving on that pretty quick, so it's, it's looking pretty good there. Yeah, they're, they're moving quick, so uh, I'll be excited when they're, they're done with that, adding almost double in the space for the library there. Um, so I had a whole kids wing area and everything, and then some outdoor seating where you could take your books outside and read outside. Um, so yeah, that'll be nice, so if you haven't got a chance to look at it, swing by there and check it out, but uh. They'll be done uh, sometime next year, so that'll be exciting when that's, that's open back up. With that, our entertaining motion to move into executive session number one.
Yeah, you want me to add five minute break? Uh, move the city council recessed executive session for fifteen minutes with a five-minute break to receive. Advice of council regarding economic development pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at. Let's do forty-two, nine forty-two PM, no formal action is anticipated following the sessions, persons to meet attendance are the following. Lane Massey, City Administrator, Rhonda Dunn, Finance Director, Jacob Spear, Public Works, Alice Nabel, and Spencer Lau. By phone.
Second.
Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Motion carries five zero zero, PJ, we'll have somebody call you up.
You're from the country, Monica? How long ago was that?
Okay, so I haven't been, I haven't been since, um, quite some time.
Quite some time.
When I was running race there, I know what it's like.
Alright. Alright, let the record reflect the governing body reconvened into open meeting at 9:42 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. Discussion was limited to subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes of the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 754319B6 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at?
53.
9:53 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance for the following: Lane Massey, Rhonda Dunn, Jacob Spear, Allison Abel, and Spencer Lau by phone.
Second.
Got a motion as second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, but was, is PJ on there? No, okay, 4-0-0. Alright, welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect the government body reconvened into open meeting at 9:53 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. Discussion was limited to subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion as second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries 4-0-0. Have a great night, everyone.